Council meeting to order. Quickly do a review, actually join me for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Rich.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Per normal, I'll start with a quick review of tonight's agenda. And we will all be calling for any proposed changes to the agenda. We'll then be getting into public comment. Jeff, have we had anybody submit for public comment either in person or online?
No, Mayor, we've not.
All right, so no public comment this evening. We have, we'll have a response to the previous public comment from last week. We'll go to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our June 21st meeting. Under ordinances, we have a public hearing tonight on our Sandy municipal code, chapter 10 amendments, dealing particularly with RV and overnight parking. Under new business, we have measure 109 regulation options. That will be a fun conversation. We have the League of Oregon Cities 2023 Legislative Priorities Discussion. We'll go to a report from Jordan Willer, our city manager, then we'll provide committee council reports from our city council. We'll look to adjourn after that. And then, of course, we have an executive session for our council after we adjourn this evening. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pete's old.
I excused.
Counselor Smallwood.
Excused as well.
Counselor Sheldon.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Hopkinson.
Here.
Mayor Pullin.
Here. With that, is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move ahead to response to previous public comments. Jordan?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So last meeting, there was a couple of comments in written, subtle and in-person testimony about the filtration plant and the city's decision or reconsideration to build a pipeline to the city of Portland's proposed new filtration plant. I asked Jenny to stick around and I might call her up to kind of elaborate and kind of revisit some of the discussion that we had with council during the reconsideration. But as I, you know, as I understand the testimony, and thank you again for coming tonight. You know, the concerns around cost effectiveness, the questions of risk of whether the plant would be approved and built, and whether the city can maintain our compliance with those sort of risks. Just want to touch on a couple of things that we talked with council about. And it does have similar, you know, similar categories. You know, on the risk side, for us, you know, the risk of not pursuing a relationship with the city of Portland with the filtration plant puts us at a longer construction timeline on our ability to plan, design, acquire property, site, treatment plant, and ultimately construct a new treatment facility of raw bull run water. We looked at a number of different sources. We had a groundwater study that we looked at. And, you know, the best solution in the midterm and possibly long term, both from our current supply needs for water, but also long term is to continue to purchase bull run water. And as we looked into the, the, the studies and looked at the costs of building a treatment plant versus pipeline, the construction costs, especially in this climate, just started to escalate. And so for the long term and the near term cost effectiveness, it was cheaper for us to build a pipeline to connect to a filtration plant, even if you factor in the more expensive filtered water than buying raw water. Right now, we have consultants that are part and staff that are part of negotiations with the city of Portland on a new long-term agreement for wholesale water customers. And some of the risks and concerns that you raised, we also have, and that's part of our negotiations, is that we don't want to be on the hook for, you know, paying rates to buy into an expensive capital program, both for the new facility, but also for all the infrastructure that has been built by the city of Portland over the last couple centuries. And also concerns that as more bulk water customers leave, that they're going to spread those costs on cities and other agencies like us. And I could say, you know, these agreements are still being negotiated, but we have positive movement in the right direction, that it will be reasonable, that we won't be overpaying for capital that our customers are not going to be using or have bought in the past. And then, let's see. Yeah, the, the other part of, the other piece of information I just wanted to clarify too. You know, this will be a costly program for the city of Sandy rate pairs. And either option would be a costly program. And I want to be clear on the information that's out there on rate increases that I think it was stated around 500% or something in, in the model showed, I think it was a cumulative rate increase over the next five years, possibly up to somewhere around 150%. And that's under, that's, that's a scenario that includes revenue bonds only, a lot of contingency, a lot of escalation built into the cost estimate, so that we are being more conservative on what we think the price will ultimately land. I think partly where people are seeing that maybe it looks like a 500% or something is that they're adding up all the numbers that were maybe in the presentation instead of looking at it holistically. If you include, you know, the meter charge, the consumption charge and the base rate, it was, you know, 41%, followed by possibly a 36 and a 36 under that current assumption, which are very much subject to change, hopefully going down, but don't. I swear to that. Anything that capture? Understand that you're able to talk to Jenny after the meeting, and hopefully that helped out too. I think the, the council meeting from June 6th is also a great piece, place to gather more information about that council reconsideration, the staff report and presentation during that meeting.
I think you captured it well. There have been some very good questions about groundwater and wells, and the council and staff have been looking into that. The problem is where we are with Sandy. We do have a groundwater report. I'm just not ready to release it to public. The aquifer is just really thin. And while we could possibly find wells that might be half an MGD, what we're looking for in the size for a growing city, they're just not large enough. So we've looked at that, and as city manager has said, the new wholesale water agreement, it's going to be in negotiations for a long time. And we do have a consultant I'm really excited about, who was a public works director, who actually got together with the five largest wholesale customers when it was coming up for renewal and started pushing for better terms for everyone, and he knows the ins and outs of that. And we will have city council work sessions. But the projections we've done were done by him, and there's a lot of nuances and details, but all of those went into the model, and those showed small percentage increase every year that we could handle. But the math really shows that by maximizing city of Sandy water resources to their fullest extent, they're not maximized right now. That's the cheapest source of our water. We supplement with Portland, I'm sorry, the Bull Run source. And Bull Run provides just the, the backup resiliency for us, including the ground, Portland's groundwater wells, which we don't have access to right now through the raw water connection.
Yeah.
Everything.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Great follow-up. Appreciate it from staff. Moving ahead, we'll go to our consent agenda for our June 21st city council meeting minutes. Unless there's discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we accept the city minutes or consent agenda, excuse me, as written.
It's our second. A second. There's a motion by Counselor Exner, a second by Counselor Hopkinson to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. I'll say nay. Motion carries. Moving ahead to ordinances, I will now open this public hearing on ordinance number 2022-17 at 7:11. It's not even slurpy day. And I will call on the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So ordinance 2022-17 would amend our municipal code chapters 10.08 and 10.24, and then add a new section dealing with permitting recreational vehicles. Some background on this, as you know, one of the council goals is to address the homeless issue in Sandy. And as part of that, we formed a council work group. Council work group with counselors Sheldon and Smallwood. And as part of those meetings, a number of topics came up and ideas, and we spoke with the city of Gresham, a couple of police officers from there, and spoke with some other community members. And one of the ideas that emerged was looking at more regulations around recreational vehicle parking. And the city of Gresham had a, has a program where they have a free, no-cost permit for RV parking up to three days, 72 hours, and then no more than six times per year. So we took that as a model. We looked at it. We talked to staff about our current issues with recreational vehicles, particularly around, you know, complaints about parking and, you know, parking on public streets for long periods of time, and who owns these, and can they move them, and it's not safe because you can't see their, see around them. And, and so we took that model and we kind of worked on it. We had a council work session back in the fall about a number of issues, but one of them was introducing this idea. And so what we've done is drafted some code language for the city council to consider. That includes a new definition for recreational vehicles. And then it proposes this new section, 10.24035, the recreational vehicle parking permit program. In summary, it's not a long new code section. We kind of kept it pretty simple. Again, modeled sort of after the Gresham model, but to kind of be clear enough about how long someone can park a vehicle, but recognize that we don't want to put a lot of burden on people. It would be an online permit form that they can fill out. Again, no charge. We made some modifications based on the discussion we had at council. In particular, allowing up to six parking permits per year, but also being able to renew it. So not just three-day limit, 78 hours, but you can renew it consecutively, so that if you have a longer stay or a longer need to park your vehicle in front of your house, that would be permitted. And the only other kind of thing to touch on this would be a permit that a homeowner, so a property owner of either a single-family home or a townhome or duplex could then fill out the form. And so wouldn't it apply to multifamily dwellings? And I think some of the thinking around that was just trying to manage a program like that, where it's not clear who the owner might be. You know, multifamily can have limited adjacent right-of-way or public street parking for an RV if they don't have capacity on their own private property.
Wait. So in all practicality, what does that mean? If, if, if I park my RV adjacent to a apartment complex, we now have our hands tied to a certain degree how we have to deal with it, or, you know, I mean, like, what does that mean?
You want to be able to apply for a permit.
Oh, you just can't even apply? So what if, okay, so then how will our officers that deal with?
Contacting who's the owner of the RV and informing them. And, yeah. So I understand, you know, that right now it's a 72-hour, you know, and that's the big change, right? Anyone can park an RV on a public road for up to 72 hours, and that before it's a parking violation. This is, you cannot park an RV on a public road unless you get a permit, and that grants you the ability to park that RV for 72.
So even though, I'm sorry to interrupt, but even, I just never know when your lips stop. It is. So what you're saying is, is because I do not have a permitted permit, I don't have a permit, I, the RV's not allowed to be there.
Right.
Because, right. Okay.
So in, in part of the council's feedback too, we, we added the definition of recreational vehicle, because it can be confusing between what's an RV versus a trailer versus a camper. So we did add that, that definition.
Or a campaign bus.
Or a campaign.
Should we add that for instance?
And so in order to add this section, we made some modifications to other parts of the parking code, 10.24. We made a reference to the RV, the new RV parking permit program. And then we also added overnight sleeping between hours of nine and 6:30. And I think there'll probably be questions about that, in particular, the conflict between allowing RVs to be parked for up to 72 hours with renewals, but not allowing sleeping. So the council might want to consider modifications to that or not. But again, this is kind of centered around the livability issues, kind of the calls and complaints we get about, you know, vehicles that are parked in neighborhoods that people aren't sure about, where they might be from. And, you know, the complaints we get about people parking for longer, 72 hours and things like that. And so we've added that section, and there's a couple other little cleanup things in that section, 10.242. And.
Can I get a point of clarification on that sleeping thing?
Yeah.
So if they have a permit for 72 hours and, you know, their family's in town, whatever, can they sleep in the RV on the street or not?
So how we wrote the code does not make that clear. So no, it is how I would interpret it, that you can't.
Cannot.
Right.
So I'm, I'm sorry. Ask it again.
You can't.
Okay, so like, I got a permit and my RV is parked out in front of my house on the street, and grandma and grandpa are out there sleeping. Is that a violation or not? And what are you saying it is?
They have to stay awake.
Yeah, stay awake between the hours of night.
Okay, yeah, so that is, so even though I have a permit, I can't sleep in it?
Not between nine and 6:30 in the morning. If you fall asleep in your chair while you're sitting out there, you're in violation.
This is going to be really hard to.
Grandma and grandpa are never allowed to come over and stay in the RV outside my house?
Yeah. How it's written. You may mind, I'd consider a modification to be able to, if you have a permit, sleeping is.
We debate this. Do we get it through the hearing first and then?
Yeah, let's go through the hearing.
Yeah. So that's the, that's the changes. And a couple of things to touch on too, from the staff standpoint. You know, one, one thing Gresham was clear about, if you look at the materials, and I think other cities probably follow suit on this, is that there is some discretion in officers, you know, pursuing this. It's, most of our code enforcement is complaint-driven and is driven by calls, complaints about, you know, vehicles that have been there a while and things like that. I think the intent would be not to overburden our residents, right? Like, if they're just loading it up for a trip, they're taking that day, you know, probably we can have some administrative discretion on that, that, so the code's not, not too clear on, on just, you know, parking for an hour versus 72 hours. But I think we get the intent, would probably execute it accordingly.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about definitions.
Sure.
On the prohibited parking number E. Actually, I have a couple of calls on this one, which is a little interesting. What's the difference between a utility trailer or a mobile trailer? I get the part about boats and two-wheel. Do we know what we're talking about there?
I think partly it's kitchen sink. You know, we took out the camper trailers and recreational vehicles from that, but left in mobile trailer. I think that's similar to maybe like mobile home that may be parked that on a street, but is not, you know, obviously.
So mobile home in terms of almost a permanent residence? Is that what we're thinking here? I guess, and maybe this is just for conversation and take a look at revising the conversation. But it looks to me like there's some terminology there. I'm not sure what's.
If we don't know what needs to be covered. And while you're doing that, maybe Jerry Crossley has a question.
Yeah.
Well, I think he's intended to cover everything. I mean, it's motor vehicle, two-wheel trailer, a utility trailer that could have more than two wheels, a boat, a mobile trailer.
Yep. Then why try to define it? Why not just say, oh, oh, so however you define a trailer of some kind.
Certain object.
This applies to all cars too.
It does.
Because motor vehicles, yeah.
Or maybe this is a case of being more descriptive is not necessarily more clear, because homeowner vehicles and trailers, you know.
You're gonna have a hard enough time getting people to move to a permit, even if it's free. And especially if you're gonna not long camp on the inside overnight, so.
So the, you know, our intent, if you recall, is, is not to punish people that live here that have RVs and are taking them and using them. It's more of folks that are parking on our streets that are not.
Leaving it, staying there for a long time.
Ugly.
And this gives us a tool to approach those vehicles with, you know, you don't have a permit. In order to have a permit, you need to be, show that you live here.
Right.
Two minutes. I hear you. I hear you.
I think I'm about done.
Now we're getting excited for it. You're really raising the expectation.
I, I think I'm done. The only thing to add is, you know, we thought about how to, how this is enforced. And again, you know, a lot of it is complaint-driven by calls, by contacts when folks complain about a vehicle being parked. And in terms of staff time, you know, you know, obviously we respond to a lot of these calls already that have to do with RVs. And so now it kind of changes the nature of that of, oh, you need to, you know, fill out this permit, which I think we already have an online permit ready to go. And then in terms of enforcement, yeah, probably a little bit of added time, you know, in terms of enforcing then to check to see if they have a permit, you know, tracking down who that person might be. And then citations is really, you know, again, officers writing citations or code enforcement ready to park a citation, which.
Is this a printed permit or an electronic only on my phone, smartphone permit? So there's no, nothing in the window for somebody to drive by and see like when I'm parking in a parking lot?
It could, we could go that route. It's just an added, you know, making somebody print it or come pick it up at city halls. Again, just another layer instead of, you know, some like, you know, code enforcement or police officers being able to go into the system and saying, oh, you know, this license has a permit.
I print out tickets all the time if I go to play or something like that, so. Used to be, I think I do a lot more with the smartphone, but I can print out stuff.
You know, when you go to the movies now, you can actually pre-reserve the seat. Carl's pretty amazing stuff.
They make me park in the back too.
So if somebody has a campaign RV trailer, two-wheel, parked somewhere where I'm interested, and I don't know if they have a permit or not, I just call it in. Client's guy checks and says, and so then I call it in the next day. Yep, until it moves.
Okay.
Okay.
I think, I think the one issue that I have with what you said was that the complaint stuff is, or the enforcement is complaint-driven.
Yes.
And I feel like it's not fair to the, our residents to take over the role of enforcement. You know, as the one who's had to call in folks across, you know, be the one to kind of rat them out or whatever. And I've been very, you know, over four years, I've not done it often, but it's just, I believe that, you know, it's really awkward to, you know, cause, call, you know, enforcement on your neighbors. It just makes for awkward dynamics, and it, and it really is. I, I just don't agree that it's always got to be complaint-driven. I'm not saying that we got to be out there with an eagle eye, getting every little thing out there, but there's got to be something between complaint-driven and, you know, when you're going by stuff and you notice it, and you've driven by, you know, every day for a month and seen it, it's on you to do your job and enforce it, I think. That's, that's what I would say about that.
I agree. I think we, I oversimplify. There is definitely self-initiated, you know.
And I know, I know, I know that's not exactly how it's getting enforced too. I mean, I know there is enforcement being done without complaints made, so for, for the most part.
And honestly, a lot of it just comes down to call volume too, that it's so driven by complaint, because there is so many that come in. We don't have the time to have somebody just driving around looking for issues. And, you know, because they have calls to respond to, but as they are, you know, there's times they're like, oh, they out there. That's tall grass, or that car doesn't, looks like it's been there too long, sort of thing.
Yeah, so Chief's a nice rig. I saw Moody driving around in these days, so. Nice little car. I was giving him a hard time about the other day. All right, public testimony. Let's do this. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate if you would like to speak and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will now call on each person when it's their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. Jeff over here, city recorder, will let you know when you have 20 seconds remaining. Our council rules do require that each person state your name and address for the record. I will now call on any proposed testimony on the ordinance. You will have three minutes to speak.
Mayor, just looking for any raised hands. Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
All right, I will now call on a motion to close the public hearing. No, I'm sorry. I need a staff recap first. Go, Jordan. Do you have anything you want to review?
Nothing to review. You know, our recommendation is to approve the first reading. I think going by the questions that we've heard already and looking forward to the discussion. We'll possibly make some amendments here or not, and get the council's input to bring it back for a second reading. But, you know, again, this was something that we kind of been working on over the last, you know, several months with the council work group and our city attorney's office, kind of model or program to help us more effectively monitor and, you know, enforce our current parking ordinance and strengthen that based upon the kind of comments and concerns that we've had over recreational vehicles in particular, so. Thanks for your time.
Quick question?
Um, I would be like to hear what Chief Roberts or yourself have any concerns about deleting that sleeping in the vehicle issue. Would that cause a lot of issues if we deleted that or not?
The chief can probably give a perspective on police and contacts. This not in the code right now. And, and again, this is, you know, helping us try to get ahead of issues around camping and enforcing sort of non-permitted camping on public right-of-ways to be consistent with, you know, sort of our code that we adopted last month. So I think what we're trying to do is be proactive in, in looking at this issue. You know, as far as people sleeping in cars, and I understand that, you know, there's maybe an issue or discrepancy between that and permitted recreational vehicles.
Okay. Not to.
As, no, as we're still on the public hearing, I move that we close the.
Okay, it's our second. Motion to close the public hearing in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Nays. Counselor Hopkinson, you're up for discussion.
Cool. Thanks. I don't like when we have discretion-based rules that are arbitrarily enforced or not enforced based off officer or anybody else's particular needs. If we want to be compliant, we should write the code so that everyone can be and ought to be compliant. So to that end, if parking in front of your house for three hours is fine, then the coach said you can park up to three hours without, without a permit, or whatever the time is. So I don't like the idea that it's discretionary in terms of what gets enforced and what doesn't. That's, that's my primary point of question all the time. It just, it's bad practice, I, I think, in terms of just being, you know, well-regulated in terms of how we write code. I also want to just make sure that if we do this, that it's a printed ticket, so that we don't create extra work calling stuff. People know it's a permitted thing. It's just like a parking pass. To me, that's an important little distinction, so your neighbor's not riding you out every time. I'm just gonna go over this quick. The frequency, it was also noted by one of the online, the emails that we received, that for some people, the limited number of permits per year is actually limiting, artificially so. I mean, I think in the, in terms of it was drafted, it was like six long events, but it doesn't take into account, that could be three short trips with long durations apart, right? So, because you didn't permit at the front of your trip loading, you need a permit at the back of your trip. Well, that's two, right? So I think if we're going to limit the number of permits, it should be a large number that's, you know, allows for retired people to do what they want to do with their RVs. I don't think we should limit that. Relax, sleeping, I've done that back when I had an RV, and I went to friends' house and I slept in an RV out front, because that's why I had an RV and owned it. So to me, that's, that's not something we need to regulate. I, I'm open to understanding how it fits into the homeless and abandoned vehicle thing. And if that's something that's required, you know, then I can change my mind, but if we're just talking about an ordinance, that makes no sense. I also want to point out that boats are not prohibited right now under this. But one can sleep in a boat, and there's actually been an issue, and I think in Florida not too long ago, where somebody was camping in a homeless boat. So we might want to consider. So we might want to consider. Boats as well if you're going to to do this. And last, I wanted to make sure we address the two-wheel, three-wheels, four-wheel trailer, you know, if we're going to differentiate. We should probably go off axle. And I do have a problem restricting this from apartment dwellers. And if I live in an apartment, I have the means of not being. And there's a place for me to park. I don't see why I shouldn't be able to. That's my first thoughts. I just throw them out.
Carl, I saw you.
Sure, for me, I thought this was something we were going to be looking at to help the flagrant problems. Problems where it was unsafe to look around. The perennial person parking there and living there, maybe as a second or a third bedroom or. Or somebody who's there illegally doing illegal things and. Things that we don't really want to see happening in the streets. So for me to get to the point where. I'm trying to put a permit together for somebody who's trying to unload or load their trailer for a RV camping someplace. That puts me beyond that, I think. So I would like to see us think of a little bit more about. The way that we could stop the kind of use on our streets that make it unsafe. For a whole bunch of different reasons, just. Driving around it to maybe doing things in the trailer that are not legal, all those kinds of things. So we could find a way. To. Manage that and use that as a way to. Reduce, re-eliminate those kind of things. I think that's really important. Things, it looks like there's a few definition problems, two wheels versus four wheels. I got a couple of phone calls on that as well. So I'm thinking that either be shorter in our description or I'm not sure, just more detail you get. More people find reasons to get around it. Say, well, mine's got two and a half wheels or something. I don't know. Or five wheels, or who knows what might be to make it, so make it less detailed and you probably cover a lot of things. But I think short. Trips parked down the road, loading food and and clothing and. Or maybe even spend the night, you're gonna have a hard time stopping people sleeping overnight if they're there to load up and they're going to screw out the next morning. That's gonna be a toughie. And I I think you're gonna cause a lot of heartaches too.
I'm thinking it through and I'm here, I I'm trying to interrupt, but why aren't they in the parking lot though?
Well, what parking lot? Sometimes we have some places.
Yeah, okay.
Estadia, for example, where you've got a half a parking lot and you got a twenty foot trailer, so. There's gonna be some needs to be able to figure out a way to put those things. Your neighbor's yard, that's gonna be toughy because I know I've had that where my neighbor parked his car pickup. In front of my house and he was repairing it for over a year, so. I got pretty agitated about that and we've made some enemies between neighbors. So I think there there needs to be some logic in there and I. Strongly agree with a number of Don's thoughts about if we're going to be lenient on some areas, let's say it.
And then, okay.
Not not let's, let's not give. Forgiveness because it happens to be somebody we know is not going to be there for a while, but they're pushing the.
So why does overnight overnight sleeping not get included in the permit?
Not.
Why is it not? Like, like, because so even if I get a permit for my RV, I've told that I'm not, I'm not allowed to sleep overnight in it, right? So why, why not? Like, like, because if we're already going to allow the RV to remain. Like, really, what is that? What is the big deal that we're trying to stop there? I mean, the big thing we're trying to stop is just the RV from staying there. Right? For weeks at a time, like.
But, you know, I think I think it's more, we just didn't think of it at the time when we built the permit program. You know, a lot of people, correct me if I'm wrong, there are a lot of people who have RVs have paths, you know, or a driveway that accommodates. And they're more likely to plug in and have access to stay versus, you know, you probably don't have a lot of people sleeping on the street in their RV.
But it's not in my house.
Yeah, but it might happen.
But it does happen.
Yeah, so I think we can, I think that's a change that we can make to clarify, you know, sleeping between the hours unless you have a permit.
George, the situation isn't suddenly me taking my RV, you know, loading, at least sleeping out in front of my house. It's somebody coming to visit me. Then I don't have to pack because I don't own the RV. I think that's the scenario that we want to allow. Somebody's come to visit, especially mom, dad, family. And.
Yeah.
I would make a move, I I would recommend changing it to allowing with the permit, the overnight sleeping. I would also say maybe amended to say for parking more than four hours, but less than seventy-two hours. So that you do allow that loading and unloading business. And then perhaps if we even want to take that a little further, perhaps saying that after your six permits. You can get a twenty-four hour per, you know, like a certain number of twenty-four hour permits. To accommodate those extra camping trips that people might be taking and, you know, twenty-four hours should allow you that. And, you know, if if the four-hour loading and unloading thing doesn't take care of it in twenty, you know, a certain number of non-consecutive twenty-four hour permits. Like, you know, another five non-consecutive twenty-four hour permits over the course of a year might allow for those multiple trips. So we've taken care of the sleeping, the loading and unloading and. Fact that, you know, each trip you take is a two permanent situation.
I did get a phone call about this as well, which I thought about it earlier, but sneak it in here. And that's that, and I'm aware of people who do this, during the summertime, they're camping every week. So six camping times may not be enough.
Yeah, but those folks have nine times out of ten purchased a home that accommodates that lifestyle. Or they should, they should, or they should.
You tell people they're gonna spend a bunch of money to be able to have their RV.
Well, you should, yeah, but you shouldn't be on our street with this Dodge and I'm right and left. You should buy a property that's conducive to that lifestyle.
We have RV parking in the city for people to buy. I had my RV parking spot down by the industrial area down there.
Yeah.
And then I'd bring it to my house back when I owned it. And I'd sit up front for the day or two it took me to load it up and then I'd head off on the trip and I'd do the same thing when I came back.
Sure. But I'm not hearing anything talked about tonight that prevents that practice.
If I'm retired and I'm doing that all the time, it would.
If you leave us at the six, I guess that's where my point is. So you've got to have load, that's one permit and unload. A week or two weeks later, you're gonna have to have two permits.
What if you made the changes I just suggested about allowing a four-hour loading, you know, less than four-hour period for loading and unloading?
A lot of times, but the color I had was, I've got a large fifth wheel.
It's a day that.
It may take a while. Especially if you're tired and training.
Guys, you are not in the podium. We get in and out.
I was an RV, used RV salesman.
I saw what you traveled in.
So what numbers are you guys, I mean.
Given that, you know, I know when we, when we discuss this, I think we're looking at like a summer, right? Like, and and you figure four weekends a month, right? You have, I I don't know where we exactly, we came up with six. I'm sorry, I don't remember that number. Or how we got there, but I I think our general idea was trying to accommodate the summer months when you're going to use them.
Pretty logical.
So I mean, like. How many, how many is a reasonable number? Like, just what is that? Because I think if to Don's point, you've got to draw a line in the sand.
Sure, sure.
And I like Kathleen's thing, like, hey, you can have four hours to bring your stuff out. I'm kind of on the podium. Right? My, it's like, everybody gets together and starts throwing things and we're going.
But you're organized.
I wouldn't say organized.
Six permits to get it loaded for the summer and then it's just putting the food and crap in.
So how, so what is that number?
Let me ask the question differently, Cam. Why do we care about the homeowner who's loading his RV? That's not even the purpose of this ordinance at all.
But it's it's for the same, because again, back to your point, you can't enforce something that there's not.
So so for an agreement that it's not about the homeowner who has his RV, then wait, it could be sixty. Permits. It doesn't change what we're really trying to accomplish.
That one I agree with. If you have a homeowner that is doing the right thing, but when you have a homeowner that's like, hey, I'm going to rent my RV out to Billy over here. And started taking out notice in there, then that becomes a different matter. So I think you do have to to draw that line.
Okay, that that's stuff I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, so for me, I I I like where Kathleen was going with, you know, you should, we should limit how many consecutive you get. That might be a better limitation, you know, maybe, maybe it's a five consecutive seventy-two hour permits in a twenty-one day period. So there's some gaps. And then, you know, you take that six and you go up to twelve or fifteen, you know, some reasonable high number that would accommodate, you know, snowbirds. People want to go, always be gone.
But there was, you know, one of the, there is another reason that we're looking at this too. We do get calls about folks that do own an RV. And they game the system by moving it, you know, every seventy-two hours or something. And so we get those calls and it drives people nuts.
Permit from a home, from a landowner to get that now. Because today, without a permit, you could do that if it was only.
Right now, they can't.
Right, yeah, they wouldn't be able to.
Right, with a permit at system. It hoots with multiple landowners and so.
So there's, there is another issue in this. That's safety, not just the. Having somebody camp there for weeks on end, but also driving, looking around it. I've had one. The rental next door to me that parks right on the very edge of my driveway. There's no way I could see down the road at all. I don't know that we've talked much about how to solve that particular problem either. Now, if it's only a few hours. I can find a way to be real cautious, poke my nose out, poke my nose out, get it, but it's there for seventy-two hours in a busy road. Yes, I'd like to have it up tight against the. The current possible or not there at all.
I think you already have laws that deal with that. I think you have illegal parking in Sandy, which is a statute for us. I think is applicable in some of those cases. You know, you also have what's considered a hazard and stuff like that that are enforceable. So I think, I think you already have those. Now, again, there's the discretionary point, right? Like, that's 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 used. And to Kathleen's point, like, I mean, I don't know if you necessarily. Want to put it on the. Citizen to be putting it out there, but you know, all of those things combined, I think, is why it feels that way, but I feel like there's already. Ernie, tell me if you think I'm wrong. There's already things that we have on the books. That are probably fix that problem.
Okay.
They're just not being used.
Typically, that's pretty quickly though, happens and it's gone pretty quick. So not too much fun there, but and I'm a neighbor likes to talk to my neighbor, so. He's not halfway, yeah. I'm a windy kind of guy. But anyway, some people are not. Kathleen's point again is, who wants to get into a big, just a match with your neighbor? Especially you got to deal with it.
And then back to, back to Carl's point, I just wrote down when you said, you know, we're trying to address the legal issues and stuff. And I think what's important to remember is. There's a lot of stuff that's kind of, that might be illegal, but without law enforcement having a reason to contact that person. You start running into challenges on, on what's the lawful reason I'm doing that? Being. Awkward or weird or suspicious may not get you there. This gives them a tool to go up and. You know what I mean? And so you can address, so potentially you can address other issues, or at least you can have a lawful reason to have a conversation of saying, hey. These are the rules and and this is what, this is what the recourse is.
So I'm hearing that we're getting a lot of direction, good stuff, good feedback and direction. We're not going to get, you know, through the first reading tonight. I do though, it's before we just send staff on their way to kind of clean this up, I was hearing some stuff on like the car overnight. A little bit, we're we're fine with the cook, the the car overnight ban, we're okay with that. Just want to make sure we are. Yeah, Ryan.
The car overnight.
Hey, you can't sleep overnight in a car either.
Oh. Okay.
I don't, I don't think we want to be a community that's so. Okay with people sleeping in cars. The ones okay, we want people out, but sleeping in.
Only place I have there, this may not be an issue in the city that's pretty big. Maybe this is something. Speaking out of term for, but the ones that I know of that are sleeping in their car overnight are there for economic reason.
Right.
So where are they gonna?
We don't, but, well, we find them and all. That's my point is, is.
We don't have.
Well, there's lots of alternatives. You drive outside, no. Yeah, you drive outside the city limits, but there's also, there's alternatives housing and stuff within the Portland metro area that, and they have a car.
For Sandy people? I'm I'm not sure that I'm ready to say no camping overnight inside your car. But it just, it just kind of hurts to me a little bit. You got a person that's just, you know, McDonald's hamburger, flipper, and. They got no place else for the wife and two kids.
A wife and two kids should not be living in a car. And we then, and we should, and we should not as as a society accept it. And we should say no, and then we should provide alternatives and do whatever we can to get them into a better.
I'm all for you. I just, I just don't see it happening very often now. It doesn't happen sometimes, which is part of the problem. Okay. Good question, different problem.
So some of the changes that I recommended was the four-hour limit. You know, that less than four hours you don't need the permit. Some twenty-four, four-hour non-consecutive permits available in addition to the six per year. What was the third thing? Oh, and allowing sleeping in the car with.
And definitions on that.
Five consecutive in a twenty-one day period, does that hit your?
You had six, didn't you?
I mean, I I'm cool with whatever. I think it's just important that we have something, something there.
Yeah. And we could try this and see what happens and let's say it fails, so then. You come back to us and say, you know, five isn't good, we need three or we need eight or something.
Because the people that are giving the permits aren't the people that we're. Right? This is, I mean, unfortunately, this is making. People have to jump through a hoop so that we can deal with those that aren't jumping through the hoop, unfortunately. But I don't, I don't know of another way to do that.
Well, there are, I mean, over in Sandy Left, I know there's these big huge fifth wheelers that are parked out. On the street for months at a time.
This will force people to get off-site parking, which they should have done anyway, because we already had parking ordinances against that, so. Or build that pad on the side of our house.
Great. And and we do have a similar situation for temporary signs. It's free, it's electronic. And you just sign up for it, do it so people know in the city that it's done. And then you just do your side thing, so.
I think they should have printed off and put it in the windshield just so everybody in the neighborhood knows it's.
I I like that.
Yeah, visibility and.
I mean, I have to get a memory thing to get my canoe launched in the lake. I have to.
So to move forward, do I need to, we've already closed the public hearing. I don't need a table discussion to the next meeting or anything. We can just move forward on the agenda. Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Just, when we're doing these permits, if you're making a print of, let's print what we want them to do. So make sure we're, what, what do they have steps toward when you comply with? And then also we can add that good safety advice as well, you know, make sure you've got good line sight lines or you're going to get, you know. That it's a safe parking environment, because this permit isn't going to, it's not, it's not going to allow you to park unsafe.
Correct, right. Okay, so just to recap. Uh, no permit required for loading and unloading. Would council be open to eight hours based on the what the, you said four, but eight?
Eight, whatever.
Okay, I'm just thinking, oh, no overnight, but. Okay, doesn't matter, something reasonable. And it's additional permits for twenty-four hours permitted per year in addition to the. The six or maybe eight seventy-two hour permits. Allowing sleeping if you have a RV permit, clear up the definitions and then.
By the way, you could require, are you going to be sleeping in it on your permit when you apply for it? We could say. We're, we're going to have two occupants, you know, I mean.
You want to get into generator use and no, it's okay. Okay, thank you for.
One thing when it says parking, just real quick, on E where it says parking or storing a motor vehicle. What, just out of curiosity, why can't we just change that to trailer? Like, I mean, any, you know, anything that's pulled by, I mean. A hitch, another vehicle, what, you know, whatever that is, that way you limit, you know, everything from, because there's. All seriousness, there's no need to put the car hauler out there or the utility trailer out on the road forever, all of that stuff. Just my thoughts.
Yeah. Okay, another option, we could look at actually defining that then. Trailer, what is a trailer and have a big long definition include everything or just keep it a trailer?
Something that's towed by another vehicle.
Yeah, whether you got a boat on it or you got a, yeah.
We're just trying to get everything off the road.
Does that include the big eighteen-wheeler things that get, used to get parked on Champion Way and all?
That's.
As well.
Yeah.
What's that?
Might as well.
Yeah, well.
I mean, is that, is that what you use to site, to get rid of those chief Roberts?
Not that particular ordinance.
Okay, something else.
All right, cool.
Thank you.
Under new business measure one oh nine regulation option. Psychedelic.
I thought you were going to go.
Oh, okay.
We're arguing, he gets to do it. Go on, guys.
All right, let's.
Well, we can tag team. Well, we can tag team. I'll cut to the chase. Um, so council, we're asking, this is late breaking, I know, measure one oh nine was. Psilocybin mushrooms, uh, this was approved by our measure one oh nine. Last year, and so there's some, some rulemaking that has occurred. Uh, and now we're, we're kind of faced with decisions on how to implement, uh, the legalization of psilocybin. We have limited time to do this, and it's kind of why the late ad, I think you've seen the LOC's communications about this, and Barry Elton and Hammond have communicated it. We've really broken it down, uh, into three options, which was a recommendation by our legal, uh, council and the LOC. Um, in terms of, uh, council considering putting things on the ballot. Um, so either prohibiting any licensed psilocybin facilities located within the city limits, which could be a permanent ban. Or a limited duration, uh, ban, um, or imposing some time, place and manner restrictions on those facilities. Beyond what, uh, with the current, uh, law, uh, how the current law is written. Or option three would be to take no action and just accept the law as, as written. Um, there is some, you know, time, place and manner restrictions in there, but. Uh, you could definitely go further. Problem with option two, which is the impose a time, place and manner restrictions on those facilities. Um, really, it's just a matter, we're, we're under a time crunch to try to pull those things together. Um, and give in front of the council to consider changes to the code, looking at maps, how to, you know, regulate those facilities, where do they go, et cetera. This is similar to the marijuana discussion, uh, as council told, I think that was referred to the voters for a ban and it was approved. So, um, we're kind of faced with a similar, uh, decision, uh, for the council to consider tonight. Jeff, do you wanna go any of the details of different types of licenser? They, council can ask questions too about this, uh, but. Our sort of assumption is that, um, the council would probably wanna refer something.
On the ballot. I mean, I, I just knowing the personalities and the counselors up here, I don't know, it feels like it's something that we put on the ballot. That's, yeah, Dawn and then Kathleen.
So, unlike marijuana. With this particular one, there are certain medical uses that are developing, that are quite dramatic and potentially, um, life-changing. In terms of its, or at least for the, uh, systems with depression, PTSD and other serious things that are affecting large member of our community. If down the road, this becomes more mainstream and somebody wants to include that into their clinic. If we go with option one, I believe we will have restricted them from practicing using that down the road. What would it take to roll this back if that becomes more of a mainstream medical? Given that this hell goes all the way back to state, is that, is this, would that be a long process? Would we basically prevent them from ever pursuing that?
Answer, my understanding is it'd have to be a council action or a vote of the people again, right? But simp, in its simplest form, council could just revisit the issue.
So my question had to do, and I'm looking into the background context section, um, the third paragraph, it says. Um, that these psilocybin programs can be a manufacturer production thing. A testing, laboratory testing facility, a facilitator server, which I assume is like a pot store or something. And it, well, hold on, a facet, it says facilitator, uh, cop, uh. Uh, what a parentheses server, uh, or fourth, a service center license where, where it's a location where you could be provided and taken. So there's four different options there. And what my question is, is with your options, do you have an option to just like allow production and laboratory testing? But not serving and serving and inviting? That's my question, and maybe that's for, uh, Chris.
Some marijuana.
Thank you, Mayor Pulliam, uh, Council Walker. Um, yes, you can refer any or all of those to the ballot. Um, and one other thing I wanted to clarify, uh, follow up on a comment from a moment ago. Um, if you refer to the ballot, a prohibition and it's approved by the voters, it's, it's effectively an ordinance. It's just passed by the voters instead of the city council, but it becomes part of the laws of the city, which can then be repealed by the city council. You would not have to send it back to the voters if for some reason you decided to revisit the issue.
Which, and if it was repealed, what's the default then? What, what option are we with if we repeal it?
Whatever regulations were in effect when it's repealed, right? So if, for example, you, you were. Didn't believe there was sufficient time, um, let me back up. The state is going to start accepting license applications in January. It will take them some time to process them, and then there's the whole land use approval process. But, um, you, you're probably, wouldn't start seeing actual applications for any of these facilities until, you know, several months into next year. But the process of mending your land use regulations to put in whatever site standards you want, design standards, limitations, so on, takes months. Right? So what some jurisdictions are doing is referring a prohibition to the ballot while they. Work up and adopt their time, place, manner restrictions, and then if those are adopted into your code, you could repeal the ban and those would then be effective.
That, that's pretty much where I'd like to be. I know that we have a lot of stuff on the city staff's plate, and if we're gonna put this on. Ballot, um, the easiest would be just prohibition and back off if we decide that's.
Yeah.
An issue.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know. Some of my, you know, people that I knew back in college, um, not to incriminate myself here, um, but a certain age. Uh, but anyway, what I remember when I was around them was that, you know, those, the mushrooms were out in the cow fields. And they grew basically in a lot of cow, and so the production, I'm kind of curious about the production, if there's, you know, ways to do it that don't, you know, smell. Or where, I know they can't be outdoors, um, and I don't know that much about other mushroom, um, production facilities. I'm not that against.
They smell.
They smell, yeah, I don't.
So it is smell.
Yeah, so I don't have a good, I mean, I guess I'd like some more information as to whether that's an issue, you know, mushroom production facilities. Um, you know, or if that's an issue with other, you know, the smells or whatever. I'm not thrilled about having, you know, um, service. And inviting right on site and then people driving around high on truce, so.
Just to, sorry, just to add to what Jordan said before, there, there is, there's, there's a time issue here. In order to, I just wanna make sure the council's aware, so that we don't have very much time at all, uh, to get this taken care of. I think the deadline, Chris, is the eighteenth of August. To have something submitted to the county, so we have to pass an ordinance here. If the council does want to do a prohibition, pass the ordinance here, then there had, uh, along with the resolution directing staff to. Start the referral process, then there has to be the seven-day ballot title challenge window, right, Chris?
Correct, the ordinance would, would oppose the ban, but it would also approve the ballot title, ballot statement, explanatory statement and so on. All of which has to go to the secretary, to the, I'm sorry, to the county elections officials. Um, and there has to be a seven-day window for somebody to challenge it in court if they want. Um, and so all of that has to be done by, I think, uh, August, I don't remember if it's the eighteenth, but that sounds close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get it on the next agenda.
Yep, keep it simple, prevent whole thing. Sold it later on if we have to.
We're doing it, it sounds like we're doing.
Sounds like option one, prohibition, let's get it onto the ballot, and then during that time, we'll get staff work on time, place and manner stuff in case we wanna.
When we, and so are we doing it permanently or limited direction?
That was my question, yeah.
I, I would say you do it until the, the vote's done, November.
Well, it's, well.
I said we do it permanent until we decide it's not permanent.
Okay, how, yeah, however.
Cause we could change it anytime a council decision.
Yeah.
No time limit.
Alright, cool, guy. On the next page, sweet. Alright, League of Oregon Cities twenty twenty-three legislative priorities discussion.
Uh, council, um. You probably, some of you remember this from the last time around. Um, every time the legislature is going into a long session, the League of Oregon Cities. Holds its membership to identify what its top lobbying priority should be. Uh, staff prepared, I, I think there were twenty-nine, uh, proposals that came out of the LOC's legislative, I'm sorry. There were a lot, uh, that came out of the legislative committees. Um, staff put together a poll of the council, thank you very much. I think we had all seven of you respond, so thank you for that. Um, it actually turned out pretty easy in terms of, um. Identifying a top five, there were five that came.
Throw it up on screen.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we can do that. Just one second. So here's the full table of weighted averages here, because. We decided to use some math, so, um, you know, and these are the short descriptions. We have more details available.
I don't understand why you guys put water so high.
I don't know.
So LOC wants us to agree on five, we're supposed to submit five, so, um, council can change this, totally up to you.
Yep, I, I struggle with, uh, funding for abandoned recreation vehicles, so. But, uh, you know, I'm not having a bunch of reasons to argue over, cause the next one down is. Homelessness, which is an amazing amount of money spent doing all kinds of things that.
Yeah.
But they're gonna, but you're gonna get the money on homelessness this side, this session.
They do something or not.
Right, so let's push to get some money for the arts, we can get rid of these RVs.
Do we know what the, addressing the measure one ten shortcomings was about?
We have all the details, if you'd like me to scroll down there in the staff.
As he does, I think a lot of it is, it's the implementation of the, um, getting clean services and.
A better question is, could this just scored it? Did we know what it was?
Yeah, well, that's true too.
No, so my score probably is canceled.
Here, just consider.
Okay, we understand the problems, but they don't tell us what they wanna do.
Well, I think that's what they're wanting to do is. Look and see what problems they are and then figure out how to address them, just.
Yeah.
Justice and.
In my mind, the bottom half is less private than the top half. We could argue over what four or five might be.
I think we're good with the top five, unless there's anyone that wants to say now, right now.
Yeah, I mean, that whole measure one ten with the drug, I mean, I just felt like, and I, you know, I defer to Chief Robertson. Um, Counsel Sheldon that. You know, trying to get somebody into, you know, it, it was very difficult to. Uh, try to get somebody into treatment, uh, obviously if they didn't want to, but with any incentive, if it's not illegal. And you couldn't get them, you know, if they weren't getting arrested for, you know, stealing cars or whatever it was. I don't know, that's the one thing that I just think, you know, there needs to be more treatment options and. But I also think that having, when there isn't any ramifications or, you know. Uh, possibility that they're going to see any consequences of that behavior, they're not likely to change it. I just. I would, I would probably rate that issue higher than the abandoned wreck vehicles. Cause it's just, that whole issue's just a big driver of priority number five.
I'm, I'm hearing a lot of energy about fixing that though already. Wondering whether we're gonna be moving it up, making a difference in what legislature does. A lot of people.
And that's how I, I feel like measure one ten's like so much bigger than us, but practically, we can come together with other cities easily. And say, we're all having these RV issues and none of us have any way of paying for it.
How much overlap is there on the top? Three, maybe arguably four. I mean, it, so I guess if we're going to say these are our priorities, is it super important to have three that are?
Water.
Which I mean, I totally get, I can get there, or is it better to have five true different priorities? To kind of reflect what we truly need if we're giving up something for that.
Consider a hundred other councils going through the same effort right now and picking their top water. So don't send all three back.
Yeah.
You, you get diluted into nothing.
Cause what, yeah, cause what I want is I want League of Oregon City's team of government relations guys to look at this and say. Our members have a major water infrastructure problem, you know what I mean? Like this is what we need to focus on.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Let's move forward, thank you.
If it was just us, I'm with. Those should have been consolidated one choice or outwater.
Totally right.
If it would have spiked.
Yeah, that's totally right, yeah. Uh, alright, Jordan, report from the city manager.
Thanks, um, so you saw that information from Jeff and the LOC about the annual conference, you're all registered, October five, six and seven. Couple of questions on that, uh. First, uh, there is an awards dinner that the LOC puts on, uh, I think it's sponsored by PGE. I don't know for, for any awards this year or not, um, but that's on Thursday night. Um, and so we'll have Wednesday night and Thursday night, I think the conference ends on Friday.
And what's Wednesday night?
So I, Wednesday night, I think it's just like a, a reception, I don't.
And that's always fun.
Yeah, but do we wanna do a, you know, city dinner or something on Wednesday night? Do we, or go Thursday? We didn't do the awards.
That's what we did last time, uh, is we didn't go to the awards dinner, but I think it's because we maybe have found out that day we didn't have tickets to it. But, uh. No, definitely here, yeah, yeah. Uh, but then we all went up to dinner, but that actually is a lot more fun than anything going on over at awards night. And it's, it is, it was kind of a cool bonding experience for council.
In the past, that's always been one of the things that I really look forward to, was being able to hear what a different council have, when you get some time to talk. Otherwise, we don't have time to do that.
Yeah.
We're so limited, so.
Okay.
So Thursday night, prime tavern. We'll make it a tradition.
Tradition, Thursday night dinner. Um, there hasn't been any information on tours yet, but now, let's come to the LOC.
And, oh, we just came up. Late breaking, tour, we have some information at this point.
Okay.
I do remember if you don't sign up early, you get.
So there's all those that we need to sign up for, but, and sorry to wrap, but my thing is, so other times we've gone, we've also went and visited like neighboring communities. Went and visited like Redmond's Park and Rack, this board, their executive director and all that. So as you think about the neighboring communities council, right, so you've got like Madress, I know Carl and I went and looked at their aquatics facility. Um, which was, you know, it's pretty cool to go look at, and there's Redmond, Bend, Redmond and Bend, do they have a joint parks and racks? Or is it this Redmond Park and Rack that you met with? I know they just went through a wastewater deal where they did a green alternatives type deal out there in Redmond, which maybe would be interesting to see.
What's the name of the one that I'm always raving about, the new, uh.
Well, and then didn't you mention that immediately, there was a pump track or something out there in Redmond.
Yeah.
But, you know, and so.
So we should take, uh, one of those blocks of time, they have all the tours for, they'll do those kind of things. But I know in the past, we've also said, well, there's like six things that we really wanna do, because it's important for our city to be able to be trained in that. Sometimes it's important to, at least somebody goes and then we can report.
What do you guys got that I interrupted?
Yeah, so here's what we have right now, so, some of these are still TBD, here's what we have right now. Um, on Wednesday, there's a tour that says transformation of a landfill into the OSU campus.
Well, that makes a lot of sense to me, actually.
One, one that caught my eye is on Thursday morning, uh, Primeville's Crooked River Wetlands complex. And some of the things we had been talking about, it's a wastewater. And then, uh, also on Thursday later in the day, uh, Forest Service Air Center and Wildland Fire Dispatch, uh, tour. So, um, these are fifty dollars, uh, a piece, uh, extra, uh, just let me know. Wetlands, yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Would, should I just sign everybody up for the, the wetlands one on Thursday morning?
Unless there's a complex and something's new come up or something, not all of us need to go to the same thing, cause we can always share. For those who don't go, if there's something more important or as important.
Is this something they did in coordination with, uh, wastewater facilities?
Yeah.
They have tour buses there and then, uh, you get on with. Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, you know.
Okay.
Been around wetland.
Oh, of course you are, yeah, of course.
Definitely, yeah, but if it's in relation to the waste.
Kathleen's probably been on more of those kind of tours than she.
Yeah.
So, not being new and not knowing what to do, we went through this exercise a year ago and.
Didn't get to go.
Yeah, so I, I would actually prefer mayor if you wanted to sign me up for things, you know.
Okay.
Let's pick a day.
Sign me up, do this. And you guys can split me up anyway.
I think it would be helpful. I mean, there is a lot of different sessions to sign up for. And I, I thought that's what we had to sign up for. So I kind of gave my things, but I could, you know, it's like, oh, I really want to go to the open too, but I thought, you know, helpful to kind of. Maybe have a couple of us go to, you know, I mean, let's see what everybody's interest is and then see if we can kind of divide and conquer.
Tours are the ones that are limited. Yeah, rooms of some kind. You can always squeeze somebody in that haven't been overwhelmed in the past.
There's a, there was a. It's titled homeless villages. It's already waitlisted. These things go really fast. So I'll call you tomorrow.
That's the problem. Jump in there quick. Have you already got us signed up for motel rooms?
Yeah, okay, it's got us good there.
Like one time we were about twenty minutes away.
Standing in an RV.
But you can't be in it from nine.
Don't fall asleep.
Go ahead, Jordan. I know you're still on your report.
Community cleanup day feedback was pretty successful. People were itching to get their stuff out. People were itching to also look at stuff. So love to hear your feedback on that too, when you have time and, and see what we can do to that program improving. You saw Rochelle's note about the community campus. RFPs. And so I think we'll be engaging with the. Council committee, subcommittee on that to regroup and think about the next steps on maybe repackaging. Going out for some services for the park versus a community center design, but we'll touch base on that. I know she's doing some research. Giving calls to firms to kind of find out, okay, you know, what, what did you see? Cause we had fifty inquiries.
Yeah.
Proposals, so might be a factor of. Cause you tell me your big project to take on for a firm with, you know, both a park design plus community center portion. Pretty robust scope there. So we might have more. You know, more lucky if we broke it up. Maybe it just did part versus community center. So we'll, we'll talk that through and try to get something going. And try again. Good news on the funding for wastewater is received notice that our. Request for congressionally directed spending did actually happen. One million dollars. There's a couple of webinars that we're, we're needing to attend to find out more information about the requirements around this funding. Particularly, will this make our overall project more expensive?
Right. Thanks for the million guys.
Yeah. So we're looking into that, but. It was nice to see them throw some money our way from our representatives. I'll be out of the office beginning this week. I have the OCCMA conference starting tomorrow and then a family trip. Back east for a week next week. I was invited to with a small group to meet with Maria Pope from PGE for coffee on Wednesday. CEO of PGE on Wednesday morning. And I think that the selection was based on probably about around wildfire resiliency. And some of the things that they're doing. If you have any thoughts, things I should share, you know, like I am sure I can come up with lots to. But send them my way before Wednesday morning.
Their FAC five oh one vegetation management compliance.
And. Yeah, that's it.
All right, cool.
All right, committee. Thank you, Jordan. Committee and council reports.
Mountain Days was awesome. Thank you, everybody who participated in that. It was really cool. I thought. There are only two observations. One was the. The first day at that, the day I was there, the city. Display was up in the parking lot all by itself up here and really limited visibility. So I think they, I think they were moved. They were gonna move Sunday down. I don't know if they did. Got more throughput, but. What I did see and that you're right, because we had the Shelley and a couple of folks out there and then they had a nice little display. And it sounded like they were getting good feedback as far as the, the. So the complan lady was there and she was really reaching out to the Latino community, which I thought was great. Cleanup, thanks. The. As far as a community campus subcommittee, we haven't met a long time waiting for this RFP, but I talked to Rochelle and we'll, we'll get a meeting on the books for the first week of August. I'll be out of town next week, so that we will meet and we'll go over whatever the next steps are. The week of the first week of August. Rochelle will send out the invite. The wastewater committee. Met without Carl, this last one. We tagged the last couple of them, so. They, I am happy that they're looking at alternative funding. So we've kind of been marking down a path of funding in a certain way. But with interest rates and things, there's a lot of things in flux. And so they're looking at different funding options in terms of how we're actually getting. Move ahead. And so I assume they'll be reported out on that soon. Just. Other than that. It's moving slowly. That I think, thanks.
Cool. Thank you, Carl.
A couple of things coming up. The comp plan is committee is meeting on Wednesday night. Is that right? In the library? I think that's open up to the public, right? Okay, so I was to go there. Forget what time exactly. Same thing with the national night out. I think that's August two, isn't it? I had a struggle to find out where that's going to be held at. My. GPS put me clear out it into outside the city. Towards two eleven. So if you could kind of figure that out, I know some people ask me where that was going to happen at. I'm sure it's going to be in the city, right?
No, it's not.
It won't be in the city? So my GPS is right. Okay. I told people that's wrong. Okay, well. Two weeks ago, I had kind of a medical issue and I just really want to say publicly that Rescue seventy-two. They are a fine bunch of guys. I don't think any gals in that bunch. I was not. Aware enough to be able to count heads or see who was who, but. They really worked a great job on me and were able to get me to the hospital and I appreciate that. So kudos to our. Guys in the rescue department. They do a great job. So I'm really pleased with that. I'm here tonight because of that. So thank you. And I won't talk about the islands between here and the. Like the Forest Service, but. Okay, I'm hoping that there will be something taken care of there. Rochelle must be listening, I'm sure. Okay, and that's it.
I too had a great time at the mountain festival. I was working with the Kiwanis and there were so many different organizations there. Doing their annual fundraisers that they've missed. And so it's really such a boon to all the, you know, the scouts and the church groups and all the local organizations. That you see and then also thrilled that it was a success and looking forward to next years. The next thing up though for Sunday is the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast and Cruisin' down at Oral Hall Park. This is coming Sunday at seven AM to one PM. There's going to be. Eggs, sausage, pancakes, lots of great raffle items. Local businesses have donated. Some wonderful raffle items, including the, the new Hudson Brewer became the axis thing and they throw axes. And they also have like some sort of target shooting simulation thing, but it's a hub with axe throwing. So. It's a lot of fun. There's not anything that could go wrong there. No, I've done it before. It's a lot of fun. And so looking forward to that. Come on down and get the word out. What I wanted to just focus though in. On my message is that the, I really appreciate the comp plans effort at getting public input. After the ribbon cutting we had the other day, I was just talking a little bit about asking questions about. What's most important to me with the comp plan and what's most really relative to all of us is the comp plan map. That's what just determines what's so what. That's what anybody coming to our meetings is going to care about is what's the zoning? And what's really important to me, and this is, I'm going to fall back a little bit. Carol, understand it right away. Is, you know, in the Forest Service, we focus on what is our existing condition and what is our desired future condition? And what we are not getting, I was shocked to hear this, is that what we're not getting out of this planning effort is any kind of. Analysis on how many acres of high, medium, low and single family density zoning do we already have? What's of that, what's developed and what's to be developed? I'd also like to know, you know, some of the stuff that got developed as single family residential SFR zone actually got developed under densities. More appropriate to, that were for LDR and really meet those needs. And so what I've been. Kind of being on a soapbox for since I got on council is we need to already understand that we have a huge, a, a large. About and fairly, a fairly good balance, in my opinion, of high density, medium density and low density. And, and so, and what happens, and Chris could maybe correct this, but. You know, when we go forward with this, anything that's zoned as medium or high density, we can't just say, you know, oh, I want that to be a single family residential. Because that would be unless the landowner is in agreement with that, that would be considered a taking under. I know. Okay. Well, anyways, it would be very difficult to be down zoning something to less density than it already is. In light of all the, you know, stuff coming down from the state legislature, let's be realistic. And so. The only options we have is then, you know, looking at increasing density. And what I'm hearing from the public is they're not excited about increasing the density. We already have quite a bit of acres, but what's puzzling and troubling me is we don't know what we have. And I, when I asked Kelly about it, he said that he could add that component and that analysis into the existing. Contract for something like thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. And, and I really believe and would like to propose that that get done at the next meeting, that we make a decision to add that in. And he mentioned using the ARPA dollars if we haven't already spent that twice over, but I think that that's very important to use that thirty thousand dollars. To identify what is our existing condition? How many acres of developed and undeveloped land do we already have? Because that's kind of the bottom line of how many acres, what's, what, what is going to be a balance? We all want a balance of all that. But if we don't know what we have now, let alone what we want, how many acres of that balance? I don't understand how we're going to even do this zoning map cop plan. So I don't really want any feedback. I just kind of want to propose that out. Is that, that, that was a shocker to hear that we aren't getting that kind of basic housing analysis of acres of what kind of zoning we have.
Hold on, I, I just figure out whether we're going to put on the agenda. I want to get some quick feedback because then I'll just throw it on the agenda.
It wasn't just a couple of years, maybe three years ago, but we did that very much. And then we put added. The different zones that we needed. So go get to the identity commercial was added and subtracted for the twenty year plan.
The UGB expansion.
I can't, don't think it was that far ago, but. No, I don't want to argue about it, but.
And we don't already have this data floating around. This is shocking.
I'm surprised.
That question's reasonable. It goes back to Jordan. Like, do we not have that data already that we can do? I mean, that's a lot of money.
But we do. It's outdated. I think. You know, going through the process of updating the data, you know, Kelly's explanation, he, he did, you know, the UGB expansion. You know, five or six or whatever years ago, we did analysis and it took a pretty substantial amount of time. But I think his recommendation is if we want, instead of, I think we have to do one by two, two thousand twenty-five. And so to update that data now, it kind of makes sense to have a compliment. Folks that are already doing like background studies and looking at. You know, or.
So we're gonna have to do it anyway. Just have them do.
Eventually, yeah.
He agreed that it was, he would like to see, he, he asked me to mention it and bring it up. So he thought it was a good idea.
Yeah.
Do try to explain why it's thirty grand. I'd like to understand that.
Yeah, we could share the scope and everything. I, I think one way to pay for it really is we make the contract amendment and this project's going to extend and that, you know, through the next. This full year or whatever, we can rebudget.
All right, guys. Let's do this. It's going to be on our agenda in, in the next meeting. They will have a funding mechanism to it in the proposal and we'll talk, talk about that.
Cool. Sorry. Mine's gonna be a lot less controversial. Jordan, have a great trip, first of all. So one thing is someone brought up to me. At mining park, they did like a library story time. And we sprayed herbicide literally right before that, said the effect to their pets wasn't posted. So I think like everyone has a different, you know, comfortableness with. Pesticides or herbicides or whatever. Be great if it was posted. I know when they did over by the park, it wasn't initially posted. So by us, I should say. So anyways, I would just like to be caught into that and in my very story time like. There definitely would want to know.
We have a pesticide herbicide plant.
So I'd just like to make sure we're following through that. And then in, in line with following the rules, which is that. When we make conditions for approval for subdivisions and that, and developers make us promises, I would like to see us. Implement a mechanism that is enforceable so that, i.e., you know, the neighbors from my old neighborhood. Aren't frustrated with all the construction vehicles driving up and down Melissa. When the agreement was that they would use the Gunderson Road access. And so I would like to make sure that the, you know. For the, not just that development, but any other development moving forward, that when we make a condition. Of approval, whether it be a tree size, road use, whatever it is. That we actually follow through and make sure that the, the other end is following up on there. And I'd like to make sure that we implement the mechanisms. Needed to make sure that that's followed. Because evidently it's not. So.
We find one developer, I think, five times, right? The last couple of months.
For that reason.
But there's, I mean, there's more.
And to that, to that respect, I, I realize it's, it's a touchy thing. But would there be any harm in publicizing that? So that, so that the community knows it. I mean, because if something's being done and people are getting fined and, and something's been done. I think that feedback would help them like, okay, well, I'm, I'm being heard, right? They're doing what they can. That, you know, there's something there. In whatever venue that is, that, that feedback, I think would be positive to know that they're not just. Being pushed aside because I know what that feels like.
Yeah.
And it's not a good feeling. So. And, and that's for all developments moving forward.
For my report, it's been said, awesome mountain festival. It's just a phenomenal weekend. I think some of us may have forgotten how special of a weekend it is. And then you do it again and you're quickly reminded. And, you know, I've had my opportunity to thank all the volunteers and everybody. But I don't think we spend enough time just thanking our team here at the city for everything that our different departments do. I mean, just phenomenal, you know, from police to, you know, our parks director, the kids parade, our kid, our family just enjoys that every year. We have, we have police out there for that, Public Works and everything that Public Works does. We got our transit doing different things. Transit was involved and. Busting people around and the libraries and the parade and doing their different programming. And I mean, it really is just, I mean, it encompasses just about every. Department of the city and, and I see our team members out there smiles on their faces while they're doing it and really be part of our community. I just, I, I want our team to hear it from the mayor and on behalf of our council. I just, and our community, we really do. Appreciate everything that happens there over the course of that weekend. So thank you for that. And yeah, just a phenomenal weekend. And I think it, it kind of goes to my next topic, which is, you know, I've asked our staff to put together a work session on the Pleasant Street Master Plan. To kind of revisit that. And, and a reason for, you know, that I, I actually, I sent them that message when I was in the kids parade, you know, walking around. Pleasant Street because, you know, the DJ's voice I talked about earlier, everything going on with the different discussions over there, like let's, let, let's take the bull by the horn. You know, let's really, you know, look at that Pleasant Street plan where we're at, really how, think it through where that sits in conjunction with everything else. We want to have happen with that property and also start thinking of ways that we can get our community, keep that, our community. Interacting with Pleasant Street and that property more often, whether it's kids parades or farmers markets or whatever it may be in the future. Getting our community kind of out there, I think is very important. And then I just wanted to end with thinking. And then, uh, just wanted to end with thanking, uh, for the public, uh, we haven't had a lot of public comment. Uh, thank you for coming to our last couple of meetings. Um, and thank you for staff for, you know, uh, taking those public comments seriously, doing some research, coming back with a real thorough. Response. It's very cool when members of our, you know, community can come in and state something and then feel like work is actually gonna happen and get a response, you know, afterwards. So thank you guys for that. Uh, all right, uh, for those of you who can't stick around for the executive session after this, uh, with that, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.